Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for September 18th, 2018. First item is salute the flag.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
No, second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Department heads and committee chair updates. Do we have any? Going once, going twice. Up comes Scott.
Scott, the road pieces on the agenda a little later if that's what, if you got something else.
Just want to let you know I did meet with Frank Carroll last week. He's supposed to be giving me some quotes for Sand Page and Godwin Road, and I had him give me another quote for another job for H Road. So as soon as I get them quotes, I'll let you know what they are and what I'm gonna do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Scott. Anyone else on department heads and committee chairs? Go to old business. Road Association Funds.
So these are the two bills that were brought up during the RSMS road survey.
Uh, Road Association Funds.
Oh, that one. Road Committee. So Road Association Funds, okay, so. And that article, sorry, that application we put up tomorrow, no later than noon, I slipped the gun and didn't send the adjustments to Jennifer in time, and this afternoon we were having issues with the links in the type of document that was being presented. The links were not connecting.
Yeah, for some reason the hyperlinks won't work in the PDF, but we think we've narrowed it down to the version, so we're working on it, and we will have it up tomorrow as soon as possible.
Okay.
Hate to put a time on it in case you never know what will happen, but we will have our best to have it on tomorrow.
ASAP.
Anything else on that? Personnel policy.
Alright, so this started several weeks back when the Treasurer made a recommendation to make a minor change regarding the S-H-A, S-H-S-A, excuse me. So the only change in here is adding one line that says, "Contribution rates are as follows and are contingent upon annual approved budget," because remember we're no longer paying 100% so.
Right, that's the Health Savings Account, HSA.
Health Savings Account for the insurance, yeah. I just need you to sign the last page.
Okay. We actually, we voted on this?
Oh, you haven't, I don't think you actually voted, no.
Okay, I know we've talked about it, so. Okay, do I hear a motion to sign the updated version of the town's personnel policy?
I make a motion we sign the updated personnel policy.
No, second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on it? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed?
So truck specs, like we said, are out. We've already gotten a few calls from some dealerships looking for additional information, and we are still plugging away, getting the generator bid ready to go.
Okay. Sounds good. Canal bridge.
I spoke to Jill at Burke &amp; Clegg late last week and to make sure that she had gotten the folder that we dropped off and all the information. She did a lot of digging. She's gonna put something in writing for you for next week, but she was pretty certain that we owned half of that bridge, so, but she wanted to look at a couple of last-minute documents and said she'd have it to you for next week.
Okay.
I was wondering if Cindy could give us an update since she went to the meeting in Wakefield on Friday.
Hi, the meeting at Wakefield was really good. However, they are doing legal work now, and they're also doing a survey, so to save the Town of Acton some money, I would suggest we put ourselves on legal hold and let's see what they come up with, and then we'll have definitely something to relate to.
So they decided to do a survey?
Yes.
Okay.
They decided they're gonna do a survey, they're also doing a title search, and so we should wait for that. On the other hand, we should address the liability issues with the railing and the runoff issues on our side. If you happen to go down there and look over the edge, you'll see layers of leaves with sand on top of them, and then again, on the rocks that go right down to the canal. So that should be cleaned up, and also make sure on the other side that we don't still have water running across that road, which is what's causing the runoff problem. We talked about the row bridge also today. That again is a cleanup problem. I may just go into it briefly, and the first thing we have to do there is eliminate those two trees. I got a call from somebody on Hopper Road this weekend, and they were concerned about the bump in the road, but they knew the landowner, and the landowner is fine to have the trees cut down. He burns woods, so he'd be happy to have that left there for him, but he's a retired disabled vet, so we don't wanna be causing any mess for him to have to clean up. And I think that, Jennifer, you do a bid process on something over 500. If you could get that going, I would be happy to go. I've had second, this is second-hand, I know him, we used to live across the street from him. I'd be happy to go visit him and make sure he's still okay with us doing this, because we are going on private property, and we may have to cut another three or two to get to the two that are the problem. But they should be addressed before they're covered with ice and snow and drop down on that bridge before, and then we'll have a real problem. We wanna look for the insurance on whoever does these trees, and I would, we'd be happy as a road committee to look into, you know, whatever, but I know, Jennifer, that over 500, you put it out to bid, right?
Yeah, did the, did the board decide that the road commissioners, that these bridges were their responsibility? Are we gonna reach out to the road commissioners first? I mean, where, where do you stand with that? Because I don't wanna, I mean, I know what you're saying, and I know where you're going, but I have to answer to them as well, so.
What's that?
Your memory's probably better than mine on it. We've been back and forth so many times.
I mean, have we, have you flat-out asked them to do A, B, and C on, on this bridge and A, B, and C on that bridge?
I know District 2 was supposed to be taking care of some of the brush on the row bridge.
Yep.
So are they both District 2?
No. Oh, wait, Canal is, Canal is, right?
Both of those bridges are.
Are they both District 2?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're not yours.
And Canal I think we wanna wait on, that's a possibility for grant money. Also, the Canal is a possibility for grant money. Leslie is looking into that, and we don't have a full committee until after the 11th. At that point, we can come and meet with you, but in the meantime, we can definitely help you with checking prices and looking into.
Well, that would be, it's up to the, it's up to the road commissioner to take care of that, so.
Well, you guys have to decide who's running this.
Yeah, I thought that in the road, in the comprehensive plan, it said bridges were taken care of by a select board and road committee. So that's something to look at.
Yeah, okay.
Say that again?
The comprehensive plan.
Okay.
It's at 2008.
Alright.
It had said bridges were to be dealt with by the select board and road committee.
That's right.
Maybe that was something, is that something we can pull up and look at?
Um, I think I have a copy of it.
Yeah, I mean, the comprehensive plan is online, and it, you know, so it's definitely can be looked at, but I guess my only thought with that is that you've had conversations with the road commissioners since then, and you've told the road commissioners that these are their jobs, and we've, we've gone over the process. If, if you're not happy or satisfied, or somebody doesn't do it in the timely, you know, we have a process that you're gonna put it in writing, and I just wanna make sure that you're covering all, all bases.
I know we told District 2, ask him to take care of the trees down in there, so.
In row, okay.
Yeah.
So, send an email?
Send an email follow-up to see where he's at with that.
Yep.
Alright, so I was gonna say, I was, where this money coming from? Because if you guys are gonna take care of the bridges, that could chew up a budget pretty quick. We got a plan for that stuff.
Oh, no, the, so, not like rebuilding the bridge.
They're just talking about maintenance and runoff.
We're talking about maintenance, cleaning up and stuff like that.
Well, it still takes money.
Right. Okay, anything else on Canal?
So we'll have something by next week as far as his timeframe, and then you guys can decide.
Yep.
In regards to Cindy's comment about the attorney, I mean, at this point, I feel like she's pretty much done. It sounded like she was done. She's just wrapping it up.
Yeah.
But if, you know, so we'll ask her to just summarize that and not to put a whole lot more into it.
Yeah, I'm gonna see what our attorney comes up with, and then we'll match that against what Wakefield says. Okay? ACO position?
Well, good news for the Board of Selectmen. Not for everybody else, but you can't, as municipal officers, be the animal control officer. So as much as I thought I was gonna pass it off to one of you, it can't happen. Another plea, I mean, I've got it running on cable, I've got it running on the internet, I've got it on the Smart Shopper, I put it in the Journal Tribune. We need an animal control officer. Wayne has, you know, agreed to stay through the end of the month, but only for, you know, things required by law. We did take the time to call surrounding towns. We've got 2, 4, 6, 7, 8 towns, just got an idea of what their residents are and what their salaries are to see if, you know, if we're so far off base, and that's not why, you know, no one's stepping up. For the most part, based on the number of residents, they're getting about the same stipend. So I'm just gonna have to just keep advertising it and.
Are they getting the same amount of calls?
No, because most towns unfortunately don't really track that. They don't really track it, because it's a stipend, so whether you get five calls or you get 50 calls, you're still getting the same monthly stipend. They're required to track dog bites, things that require quarantines, hospital visits, but, you know, the cat stuck in the tree, the squirrel stuck in the attic, you know, you might get 10 calls in a day, but none of them require you to go out there.
Mm-hmm.
So towns don't really track that. But again, it might be good for somebody that's retired, that wants to take on a little side project, maybe get a neighbor to go in on with you. There's training coming up in October. We will assist you in any way we can.
Okay. Okay, propane bids.
So the propane bids are out. We sent them, based on the propane usage and the art, the number-two oil, for the last few years, we've sent them to, say, seven or eight different companies locally, and did get a couple of calls on it already. Kept the numbers lower than what, than increasing the church, because if some reason, if they decide not to go in on the co-op, we're gonna be stuck with those gallons, so if anything, the number should go down, so.
Okay.
It's out for two weeks.
Sounds good. Coat and boot drive.
You gonna play Vanna?
I don't play, I don't play Vanna Whitewell at all, no.
Me neither, but we asked for the curtains to be open tonight, just so that you could see what was going on behind you. There were probably three or four bags that are in the hallway that haven't made its way out to coat, to hangars yet because of how busy our office is, but nevertheless, we have a variety from little, little boys and girls, all the way up to adults, women and men's, and a lot of sizes in between. We urge you to think about your neighbors, you know, maybe they don't even live in Acton, maybe it's a coworker, somebody you have. If anybody needs a coat, we won't turn anybody away. We'd really like to see people come in and take advantage of it. We also have a wide array of shoes, and maybe after the meeting, you're looking, and you, you can financially afford them, but you see something you really like, grab them, make a small donation to Neighbors Helping Neighbors, and, and that'll be that. 1st of October, they will all be going to the Purple Street Homeless Shelter for the winter, so thank you to everybody that donated. We've had a, quite a turnout, and we've already had probably, I think of seven or eight different residents that have come in and chosen things out for their family, so that's been nice to see.
Yep, great. Another, another great thing that's, I don't know who exactly spearheaded, well, you're, you're.
I'm the middle man, that's it.
You're managing it, and.
I'm the middle man.
Yep, a couple other people have spearheaded it and got it going, so it's a great.
Joyce.
Great thing to do, really appreciate it.
Joyce has been the driving force behind it.
Ah, great.
She's out there, and Jim Driscoll, between the two of them.
Yep.
So.
Great, that's wonderful. So, very fortunate to have people like this in town, so, thank you. Exactly. Okay, road commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I say one other little thing?
Go right ahead.
Right back to that, because these stories I just think are touching. So, you know that last year, we did the ornaments where we put certain presents on a tree, and you guys came in and you picked them up, and, you know, it might have been boy-sized six shoes, and you brought it back, and we wrapped it and gave it to the family. Well, we had, we have two families that all needed, that had three kids each, and they all needed boots, snow pants, and jackets. And both of those families, so we bought, ended up buying them through the Neighbors Helping Neighbors account, the money that we had in there, they both brought those coats and jackets and boots back in this year for someone else to use, so.
Oh, that's great.
I thought that was really nice, so we had bought them through neighbors, and then they ended up giving them back, so.
Yep.
We do have a couple that, if our, if our donations don't change much, we've got a couple that we haven't been able to size, but we've got plenty of money in our Neighbors Helping Neighbors, so I think I'll go out and get those couple of kids what they need. So, thank you guys for donating.
Great, great. And while we're talking about Neighbors Helping Neighbors, don't forget about the evented Iron Tales. I know it's later on in the list here, but next, this coming Sunday, Saturday?
Saturday, 22nd.
Saturday night.
Yep, and even if you can't go, tickets are $10, and 100% goes to the Neighbors Helping Neighbors Fund, so you can still come buy a ticket.
And you've heard what Neighbors Helping Neighbors does for folks here in town, so.
Yeah, if you look back, and I know that there was a video recently shown, but if you look back and think about the fire victims, you think about the ramp over here, all of the, just the drives that we've done out of those accounts.
Dinners, yeah.
The dinners, the baskets. It's been amazing.
Yep, yep. Okay, road commissioners.
So this is a follow-up, come on up, Scott. This is a follow-up from last week's conversation. Ed, I think, started the conversation as far as looking into whether or not the town should start outsourcing all of their work. So essentially, you know, H Road gets done, the, the road commissioner's gonna be responsible for his own staff, his own crew, his own workers' comp, drug testing and all that. So a couple of things follow-up, Scott wasn't available last week, so I asked him to come and give an opinion on it. Before he does that, we did get a legal opinion, which I shared with you, but I want to just read a blurb from, from Burke &amp; Clegg. It says that it is certainly possible, and it is certainly a way that it can be done, but it says, "First, I would not recommend making any such changes during the current budget year. The voters passed Article 38, which talks about the salaries and the vehicle prices, which specify labor rates based on current arrangements using town employees. A switch to outside contracts was not contemplated at the time by the voters." So based on that, if it's something the board looks, wants to do, he would recommend it coming from next year, or starting next year. And then also, from the Treasurer, gave an opinion, essentially that the opinion that she will give is that the town should wait until next fiscal year before implementing such a change. The town should also make sure that they're written inside contracts if they decide to move forward. It should be laid out in advance how payments will be made, what work is expected, who will do the work, if the contract establishes a contract, who assigns the work. She's got a list of liabilities. Again, the Treasurer thinks that it can be done if enough work is done in advance, but not something she recommends until the start of a new year, and really thinks that we need to start working on it now, if that's the direction the board wants to go in.
Good.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I saw last week's meeting on the TV, and I got that information, and I read it myself, and it's, it's a, it's a lot involved in it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, to, to go out there and detect, to take this much time, it's gonna be, definitely it's gonna be a lot of work to figure it out, as far as apples for apples, I mean, all the way around, the whole big picture. But, right off, right off the top, my, my main opinion is, is just taking more away from the voters.
Yeah, I don't see where it takes anything away from them, it actually.
Well, it takes their vote away to, I mean, they're, they're not vote, they're voting on that person to do the work mostly anyways, that lives in town.
But it's still, I'll, I'll pick on you for instance, Scott, only because you're standing there. I shouldn't say pick on, but you're the road commissioner for District 1. You have ditching to do on the Hopper Road, okay? You can either hire that out, or you can hire your own company to do it. Still gets done the same way.
Yeah, I just, there's just too many liabilities being held there. I think, I don't even wanna get into it. I think the time you guys do the numbers, it's, it's not even gonna be close for what you're getting for your bang for your buck for now. It's gonna be way out of the question.
I think it would be the same numbers, but, and thank you for coming tonight, Scott. I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I take the, the two recommendations of, you know, our attorney, and especially our Treasurer, so, you know, if that's how they feel about it, and that's what they think about it, then.
So we'll table it and bring it up late winter?
Table it for now, and we'll think about what we're gonna do, and, you know, but we got some opinions on it now, so that's good. Anything you wanna add to it?
No.
Nope, anything? No?
I'm good.
Okay. Town report reminders.
So the deadline's Friday. I have four.
Without naming names, there's a lot more out there that need to come in. It should be a basic summary of what you did from July 1st of 2017 to June 30th of 2018, including some, you know, numbers and making history.
Yep, yeah, it's definitely what's used to go back and look and see what's, you know, what was done the last couple of years or 30 years ago, so.
Yep, a lot of people go, go to, you know, to these reports to see what happened in town.
So any department heads that are out there that watching, listening, whatever, please get them in, gotta get it done. Okay, new business, 13th Street Concerns.
So we've received, I, we've received a few calls regarding a property on 13th Street, and some things that, you know, may or may not be going on over there. Code Enforcement has been out to take a look at it. He didn't find any direct violations when he was out there, but I think that some additional information has come forward at this point, which I have shared, I have shared with him, and I also shared with the board as regards to the website, but some of the people from 13th Street reached out to me and said, you know, what do we do from here? Where do we go? And I always encourage them to come speak to the Selectmen, so I think that they have a crew here that.
Yep, so if there's a rapper or anyone from 13th Street, sure, come on.
There's a member of people that I think would like to speak. And first, I'll give you a map, okay? Figure out, just so you get some idea of where this problem occurs.
Yep.
Actually showed it to them right before we came in. Yeah, we looked up. A lot of interactive maps as well.
Right in the back in Hubbard Cove.
Oh, okay, over in there, okay.
Okay, and the property's right there, okay? And the people that are gonna speak to that are either on 13th Street or on Hubbard Cove.
Okay.
I never even want to speak.
Can you just mention your name?
I, I will.
Okay.
I'll try to do this. Okay. I'll.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Hi. Sorry. Leave me alone. I'm William Gannon. I live at 788 13th Street. It's very near the end of the road. I live in that section that's the Main Lake, and across, and slightly down from the property that we're gonna discuss tonight. We have a major problem with our 13th Street neighborhood, with the Cove Edge Farm at 773 13th Street. The property's in the Shorelands District. It's on a great pond. It's a relatively small property, and there are many other people that wanna speak here. I have a series of letters, because now unfortunately the season is over, so a lot of these people have left.
Yep.
So they all sent me a letter. So I'm gonna give you these letters from the board, from the people that had complaints.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
And you can keep these and review them on your own, if that's okay. I'll go over a little bit, sorry. And there were some people that we couldn't reach, obviously.
I have another one in my inbox that I'll print off to go with the pile that they sent me.
And there's one from the Moss and Lake Regional Association also.
Okay, I think that one was emailed to us.
Yeah.
I believe I've read that one.
Ross Cannon emailed them to all of you.
Yep.
Yep. I'd like to just summarize what I think is in the letters, and you guys can read them. The concerns are strong odors from the property that people can't be outdoors, potential water quality issues, noise from the goats, a commercial use in a prohibited shoreline zone, a loss of property values in unrentable properties, smoke from a fire in the property for hours on Labor Day weekend that kept everybody inside. Pardon me while I find the rest of my notes. Then, those, those were the major things there. Now, there's also been sightings of rodents. I personally haven't seen them, but some people testify that, going in and out of the pens in those farms. I'll give you my personal thoughts on it. Hopefully you've reviewed the Cove's Edge Farm work website. On it, it lists that there is a kidding schedule, what goats are for sale, what goats have been sold, that they sell eggs 24/7, that they have chickens that they sell sometimes, and they're going to introduce even more products. And reviewing the, that website and thinking about that, it, it's clear to me that that makes it a commercial property. And a commercial property, according to our zoning ordinances, cannot be in a, in a shoreline area, and that's what's occurred. It may have started out as a pet, and now it's a farm, with a website, and that's our, one of our major concerns. It should be shut down, in our mind, because it shouldn't be there in the first place, and that we ask you to consider having the Cove's Enforcement guy do that as soon as possible. The other concern is the odor is completely unacceptable at times. It's not always there, but when it is there, it'll just, you have to stay inside. The poor guy that lives next door, and he'll speak a little later, I don't know how he stands it, I was there today, I don't know how he does it. And then I'm also concerned, obviously, with water quality. The entire reason, the first time that we had brought people out was because it was a large coliform number in the cove. And evidently, I didn't know this, but there were a couple of people that were sick in the, on the Main Lake, not necessarily in Hubbard Cove, but when the state came, in all honesty, they didn't, they found a lot of coliform, but not excess of what you can allegedly swim in. So, but we're really worried about it, and the MLRA is gonna monitor that from now on because of this situation that we have had, and there's a couple others too. So, those are my personal views. I really think this should be shut down, and closed, cleaned up, remediated, and brought back to the original place. And now, that's my, my statement, and then I guess I don't know who wants to speak next.
Thank you. I know when this first came in front of us, you know, it didn't appear to be a commercial venture, but I saw the website tonight before we came out here. I, yeah, it looks to me like whether it's commercial, or whether it's home occupation, or whatever you wanna call it, it's to make money. And it's, like you say, it's, it's not within our code.
Well, it may not make money out of it, I don't really know. I mean, I run a business.
Attempting to.
I ran a Burger King in the first year, I was $100,000 in one.
Yeah, no matter how you look at it, it's, yeah, no matter how you look at it, it's a business.
Thank you.
So, I mean, my recommendations is have a CEO definitely get back onto it.
And he, not to interrupt, but he may already be. So when I, when I was shown the website, I did go down and meet with this code enforcement officer, and he did indicate to me that that changed things, and I, he is at a training today, I did try to reach him, but I believe, and don't quote me on this, but I'm 99% sure that he indicated that a letter had gone out. I'm trying to confirm that, but since the website has been shown, that did change the, his thoughts as well.
It changes the whole scope of this.
Right.
It kicks it right into, yeah.
I don't know who is that.
Yeah.
Good evening. I don't wanna.
Just state, state your name if you would, please.
My name is Jim Murray. I live at 723 13th Street. I've been there for 33 years residing, so I've been there a while, and I, and I know the cove very well. And I just wanna point out a few things that have occurred. I'm not even talking about the smell, or any of that kinda stuff, which is there, but this is the first time I can ever remember having E. coli in Hubbard's Cove, ever. Second thing I've noticed different, especially the last two years, and some people may echo this too, is the amount of grass growing in that cove. I mean, that we never used to have. I mean, you go back in the swamp area, yeah, but we're, I'm not on the swamp area. I've never had grass growing like I have now. Now, what's feeding that? I don't know. You know, I tried to be tolerant of my neighbors, but when you burn manure on a Labor Day weekend, and you have that acrid smell going around, you know, even at that point, I left it alone. But then I saw the website, and I know we were told, oh, it's personal use. It's not personal use. And, you know, I, I will echo what he said, the DEP were told, personal use, and Kenny Paul was told, personal use, and it's not true. Bottom line, so, you know, I agree, it should be shut down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak on it? Come right up.
Hi, I'm Jack Kelly, 633 13th Street. I'm here on behalf of the Moss and Lake Association. I hope you received, did you receive letters from them?
Yes.
Our main concern is the water quality. We're trying to preserve the lake for future generations, so that's our main concern. We're gonna initiate a program, we're gonna work on it over the winter with, you know, water testing and everything, but there has to be training and stuff like that, but my main reason for being here tonight is the water quality on the lake. We wanna save it for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Karen McManus, and I'm coming as a person who has a rental cottage on 13th Street, and it is directly across from the goats. So my, um.
Karen, we can't hear you.
Talk into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, it's a rental property, and the people that were there over Labor Day wanted to share their experience, and I'll, I won't read the part about, you know, great time on the weekend, but we would like to mention one issue. While we were sitting on the porch having a late supper, suddenly there was an awful stench. We thought someone was burning garbage. It ruined our appetites and made some of us feel ill. We look forward to next year, hopefully burning of garbage, manure, or whatever it was, will not be a problem again. So I'm gonna submit.
Thank you.
You said that was across the cove?
No, I, I think come up my driveway, the goats are directly.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Pass it down to John.
See that goes up?
Yeah.
Okay. She'll make, she'll make copies and give us a packet of it anyway. So, there you go. Sure.
Michelle McGinnis, I'm his sister-in-law. We own the property, 791.
So, thanks for your time, but we do, you know, you've heard from people who live across the cove, down the street, now you're going to hear from somebody who lives 25 feet from the pens and the cages and the burning of the manure. So, you know, we want to bring to your attention that it's adversely affected the residents' enjoyment of the property on the street. You can't go out and have cookouts. You can't have, I had my family up for the weekend on Labor Day, and he had big piles of manure and burning. I have videos that I can send you of that, and you can see the woks of smoke that were all in the neighborhood for the whole weekend. It was just disgusting. And lately, we've had a sighting of rats, and the rats are in the daytime. So if there's two rats in the day, there's 200 at night. So that's another major issue again, 25 feet away from my house, 25 feet away from my well water. And where are those rats going to go when it gets cold? Over to my house. So we're asking for your help to eliminate the foul odor of manure urine, burning of manure and urine, the rat infestation. You know, we've saw some ordinances on the town ordinances zoning, and we feel that he's in violation of a lot of the odor ones. He can't be over a level two, and he's clearly over a level two. So we'd like that to be looked at. We'd like to, you know, an investigation opened back up into it, and as well as everybody else said about the Cove's Edge Farm, that should be shut down just alone for that. But there's so many other things that's wrong with the situation. He's got manure piles up at the end of the driveway that are less than 50 feet from a storm drain. Where do you think all that water's going? It's going down the drain, and I can bet you it's going into Lake Mossom. So there's a lot of things wrong with the situation. It's a lakefront property community. These things should not even be there. Now, when we bought the house in 2016, there was one or two goats, a little shed at the top of the hill, a little fenced-in pen area, and we come back the next season and he's extended it down 30 to 40 feet, added two additional pens, two additional sheds, and added 12 goats. So the situation has changed drastically. And chickens.
And chickens.
And we find rotten chicken eggs in our yard, and we're wondering how the eggs get there? Well, now that I saw the rats, I know how they get there. Okay? So this situation is not going to get better. It's just going to get worse. So again, we're asking for your help. We have plenty of letters, documentation. Again, I can send you video of the fires and the smoke, so you can see it for yourself. And I'm videotaping it from my door, front door, and you can see how close it is to my house. The back deck where my grill is, where I like to have a grill and have dinner outside, is right there where the manure pile is and right there where he's burning fires. So it's just a bad situation. It really is.
Fires were also burning in the enclosure on Labor Day weekend with the goats inside the enclosure, and we have video of that as well. As, as Tim said, some of our guests have left because of the odors. We're unable to open our windows most of the time because, again, it's about 25 feet from their bedroom window.
Yeah. What everybody says that they've experienced a little bit is really 10 times what we're experiencing. And, you know, we, we knew when we bought the house, there was a goat there, and we smelt it once or twice when we were walking through, and we said, okay, you know, we really like it, we really like it, let's do it. It's one goat, we can deal with it. And then it's just exploded, so this is not what we signed up for, so.
And my hope is that more research will be done, gentlemen from the Lake Association, on the E. coli and the growth in the, in the cove itself. My research shows that animal feces is actually primarily responsible for E. coli, and the phosphorus in animal feces is also feeding the aquatic plant life as well.
So I'll make sure that Jennifer gets copies of the videos and letters as well.
Thank you.
I've got one question for you.
Yeah, sure.
When Labor Day, when the fires were going, did you check to see if he had a permit or call the fire department or anything?
I did not.
I was just, I'm just curious, that's all.
I was just so appalled that he would do that.
Yeah, I'm going to check into that.
On that weekend...
Actually, I did, sorry.
Did you?
Yes. So I, we did contact the fire department. I spoke to the fire chief, and he did tell me that originally he had to reach out to the forest rangers to find out the laws, but he, they, you are legally allowed to burn manure, but the fire chief does have the authority to step in if the smell, if there's an issue. But people have to call when it's going on.
So you don't know if he had a permit or anything for that particular day?
No.
I'll check into that and find that out, so.
But like Steve said, it was...
It's not the first time. He's had it before.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's an easy way to...
Well, I think the commercial building, I mean...
Yeah, but I mean, we, I'll talk to the fire chief, and chances are we can at least stop by getting the permits shut off.
Yeah. Well, even without burning, it's, it's still very bad.
Yeah, okay.
It's unacceptable. And as for a level odor in your ordinance, we're definitely at a level three or above.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else?
Hi, Spence White, 784 13th Street. My family has owned land and the lake house since the late 1800s, early 1900s, so we love the area. I think everyone here will attest to the fact that it's a beautiful area, lots of enjoyment with families and friends, and that really has been totally taken away. The smell, I'll speak to the urine smell first. It's so strong, and just to give you a feel for where I am, my house is on the lakeside, but I own a property on the opposite side of the street adjacent to Tim and his family. And so it butts the farm directly. We kind of, Tim and his family share half that lot line. So on the, on the back lot, the smell is strong lots of time, lots of the time. On the front side, the state asked me to monitor temperature, humidity, and so forth over a period of time. I'm actually doing a log as well as they're doing a log. And the only thing I can see, it's not relative to rain, it's not relative to humidity. It seems to be worse when the sun is beating down on that area. There's a wind shift that drives it back over, but I have had, I have a screen porch on the lakeside, and my son and grandson fight to see who gets to sleep on the swing out there. They can't do it. That's how bad it is. And talking to the smoke issue that week, that Labor Day itself, we couldn't even really survive in the house. We did, but people were putting wet towels over their face. It's crazy. And so that's an issue. I personally, yesterday went over to check on Noreen at the property because there were some fireworks, and I didn't know what they were. I went there and stood at the door, and the next day, just to see if she was all right. And I, I personally saw the rats running along the fence line and in under the shed, okay? Good size, and they were definitely rats. Let's see. We talked about the water sample. I had pulled some of the sample, samples and sent them through, and I think I brought, you've got records of that.
The board has them.
And so that's it. I think, you know, from my perspective, I'd like to get back to the time where we could all just come up, enjoy the fresh smell of the lake, enjoy being on the lake, and enjoy the friendships that we have there, so I'll leave it at that. One other thing, I guess, I do have my property unfortunately up for sale, and there's a letter in the file that two people walked away from. The realtor brought them in, they got partway down the driveway, opened their door and said, we don't even want to look at it, so, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to echo one thing. Two and two went together.
Come up to the mic, please, and state your name. Oh, you, you've been up all night, so.
Jim Murray again.
Yeah.
I'm listening to the rats, and it's just kind of a funny coincidence, we're four doors away from this house, and we find eggshells, and we're wondering, where are they coming from? Now we know.
Oh, yeah. Anybody that's read the movie, that read the book Charlotte's Web would know. Yeah. No, I fully agree. If you have anything like that, you're going to have rodents, so. So we'll definitely get the CEO on this. I'm going to get ahold of the fire chief and find out about the permit, if there is one, for the burning, and try to get that taken care of.
So I will...
Oh, sure.
Yes, definitely. There you go.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So just to be clear, so I'm going to speak to the code enforcement officer and ask him to move this up.
Yes.
Definitely. And get out there.
May I ask a question of you? You said that...
Do you want to come up?
Yep, please.
Sorry.
I have a few questions. Don't worry.
It's the board's policy.
Yep.
[laughing].
I'm Sharon Murray. I live on 723 13th Street. When you said earlier that it is okay that the fire, you can have a permit to burn manure, and that is okay, is there any differentiation where you can do this?
That we've...
Is it farmland, residential?
I gave the fire chief the exact address of where it was, and he did tell me that permits were allowed to burn manure. And he did say that if it got out of hand though, as far as the smell or, or other, he gave me a list of things that certainly he could step in and do something about it, but he needed to be called when the fire was going on. But he did have the address when I, when I gave it to him.
Okay, so he knew it was, well...
Yep. But, you know, was it, did he know the amount?
Whether it's residential or farmland now, we don't know.
Well, no, it's, there's no, I mean, it's not farmland. I think that either you're allowed to burn manure or you're not in the state of Maine.
And if it's burning and it's offensive to the neighbors...
Then he can shut it down.
Then he can shut it down.
Right.
Okay. So while it's going on, you need to...
And I'm going to talk, I will talk to him tonight.
You need to call, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And to all the neighbors that are up there, if you, if it is burning, it is offensive to you, by all means, call the fire station. The number is on the website to call the station, or if you can't get through there, call 911 and issue a complaint, so. The more complaints we get legally through that channel, the better chance we have to of...
But we're going to, based on your policy, we're going to leave this on the agenda, and I'll have an update for you next Tuesday at the selectmen's meeting.
Yep.
And I think that at this point we need to call the, call the property owner in with the CEO and possibly whoever the liaison is.
Probably be me on that one.
That you, or you, Leo?
Yeah, with the CEO, I am, with code, code.
So we'll work on it tomorrow.
Yep. Okay. Anyone else on this topic? Going once, going twice? Okay. Warrant and finance meeting.
So instead of calling seven, nine members, I asked the liaison to pick a date, so she did. We'll, we'll let all of them know tomorrow, but for those of you that are here, October 2nd, which is a Tuesday at 6 o'clock, the selectmen are going to call the first warrant and finance meeting so that you can convene and start your yearly business. So Tuesday, the 2nd at 6:00.
Yep. And it's being done this way because we don't have a chair for the warrant and finance committee, and we don't have a co-chair. So it drops under our laps for it, and we'll get it going, and then it's their first order of business.
And three of the members are new and don't have the, the email addresses yet, so it didn't do any good to send it to the old ones, so.
Yeah. Their first order of business will be to elect a chair and a co-chair.
Right.
And then they're off and running, so. Road Committee expenditures.
So as you know, these two bills were submitted from the road committee.
Yep. Thank you.
They don't have a budget. There's certainly a lot of different places that you can take it out of, and you can authorize that, even if they don't have a budget, and I know that you're authorizing, and we just need instruction as to where they should be paid out of.
Right. Okay. The total amount is, what, it's under $100 for...
I believe it's only about 60. Yeah, about 60.
You've seen these, correct?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I mean, the road committee does not have a budget. Yes, it is road-related, but I think we have some other ways we can pay for this. We have our own...
You have a municipal management supplies account that we take, you know, whether it's paper, I mean, this is, one is a cartridge and the other one is a thumb drive that I'm assuming that, I don't know if the thumb drive is going to come back to the town when they're done, but nevertheless, I mean, that was only $17, but...
Was that with the laptop when it came back?
I'm going to be honest with you, I didn't even look. I don't, I want to feel like it's not, and that's what he may be using to go back and forth, but I'm not 100% sure.
Do you know if the thumb drive came back with the laptop? I just remember...
I'm not sure.
I mean, the laptop.
I'm not sure Chuck is gone.
Yeah. Either way, I mean, I'm sure, you know, he doesn't have any, he doesn't have any use for it. I mean, it's a, you know, they're a dime a dozen, so we just need to know where you want to pay it out of and get this individual reimbursed.
I just recommend taking it out of our municipal expenditure line.
I want to take the blame for this because the person who charged the money was not aware that we didn't have a budget, and it seemed like a small amount of money when he gave me the bills for the amount of work he put in.
Yep.
But if we're going into, I'd like to go back to the row bridge just briefly.
Let's finish this for us.
Yeah, let us get through this.
Okay.
Yep. So that's my recommendation.
Ladies?
Oh, yeah, I'll go with that. I originally thought that it would come out of the road, commissioners, budget 50/50, but it sounds like a few of the other RSMS things have come out of different computer accounts and mileage.
Yeah, the only other thing, I mean, we paid mileage out of, out of their account, which make sure we give Mrs. Hart...
Yeah, I have it here.
Okay. And the other thing was the actual program that came out of the computer expenses because it was a computer program, so.
Right.
We'll just need to make sure that we include the road committee and the budgeting process We'll just need to make sure that we include the road committee and the budgeting process as we go forward so that they can look ahead and see what kind of budget they might need, so.
Stop thinking about that, if you would, Cindy, to get a budget together as to what you may need for this next upcoming year. We also have a, we also have a form for you to fill out for whoever got paid for the mileage. It's a town's mileage form that everybody uses. We need that before you can get reimbursed, so.
Great.
Yep, appreciate it. Anything else on road committee expenditures?
Oh, I left off a public comment.
I don't think so.
You left public comment over there.
I did. What happens is I copy and paste, I copy and paste the agenda, and number six, it just keeps coming off, but there should be a six, public comment. There we go. And we're still doing three minutes?
Other comments, Cindy Hart, road committee. On the row bridge, there were a couple of other items that I feel you should be aware of, that there is, Article 42 states, and we voted on this, that any necessary small repairs may fall within this budget. Now, we may need some small repairs, and they come out of there. I know that the road commissioners are busy, and everybody's running around like squirrels right now. We would be happy to help on that. And the other thing is, I know that they did a really good job cleaning up the rec field. There were a group of neighbors that wanted to clean up that row bridge last year. I'm sure whatever liability would cover those would also cover these people if they're still interested to get it cleaned up enough so that it can be looked at. You go to the doctors, you take a shower, and you change your clothes. We need to clean that up. And there is a piece of the cement that had fell over the edge. That's probably just a wrecker coming in with a chain and pulling that out of there and disposing of it wherever. But this account specifically is the $20,000. I don't believe we need anything right now for engineering. Let's see what happens. Our first concern will be the canal when that comes up. That's first concern with Wakefield. And we're happy to do what we can between now and then to help you in any way. There's only about six weeks till it's gonna snow here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I used to like you, Cindy.
So, Article 42 is the $20,000 for the engineering?
Right, and the question at the time was, if there was leftover money, where would it go towards? Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we haven't even started.
There's leftover yet. I mean, because we haven't even.
We haven't even started on that yet.
Right. Is there any direction from the board on that, or we're going back to them, okay? Contact the road committees.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see. Yeah. You all set on that?
Yeah.
Okay, you have all set on that.
I'm sorry?
All set.
All set.
Okay.
Yep.
Good evening.
Sir?
Rollin Waterhouse. Question for the board. Who owns Lincoln School? Does the town own Lincoln School? Who's on the deed?
From what I believe, the town owns it.
Yes, they do.
Yes, the town does own it.
The town owns it, okay? Having several complaints concerning the school and the outside, particularly the, not the frontage to Milton Mills Road, and not the frontage to Orchard Road, but the backside and the other backside, totally overgrown, have tree limbs falling down, et cetera. If we intend to keep that school, then we need to do a little cleanup around that school. If it does, in fact, belong to the town, then the town's responsible for it.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Not a problem. I just took a ride down there today.
I saw something.
I do remember seeing that when I went over with Dick Neal, that the.
Yeah, Dick Neal did bring it up.
I don't know what it is that's growing, but it's.
There's some bamboo.
Yeah.
On the backside, which is very hard to get rid of. There's also some other plant issues.
Is this something that gets mowed by?
Robin?
Robin?
Probably in the front piece of it. I mean, he may.
He mows, but not.
Robin mows, but he doesn't do much handwork on that particular piece of property.
Right, and he's not required to, for clarity, based on the bid, so we don't wanna. But let me talk to our maintenance gentleman and see if he's got a couple of hours to go over there and give us a hand and look at it.
Also, on the backside of that school, if you go to the corner that is on Milton Mills Road, the back corner, and look, there's a post under the building on one corner, and nothing. Something's gonna fall apart if we are, in fact, going to keep that school as a historical site, et cetera, then, you know, we have to do some work down there. The only reason I bring this up is because I was at the Atkins Shapley Historical Society meeting, and it was brought up then, per Dick Neal, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
An update next week.
Thank you, and thank you for the October 2nd.
Dennis Long, there's two things I'd like to speak briefly about, if that's possible for me. One is the 13th Street issue. I understand the odor and whatever. The real issue for the selectmen and for the people that live down there, and everybody for that matter, is a health issue, okay? Anybody with a half a brain knows, if you see two rats, you get 200, and they don't just hang around animals.
Yep.
They move miles, and they'll find a place to get into some of these places, and they do an enormous amount of damage. And rats, as you know, are a very big health issue, and it's a big health issue for the water quality, and not just the people on 13th Street, but all through the town. They have spent millions of dollars in the last 10 years trying to preserve the water quality on these lakes, and I would think that this would be immediate reaction from the selectmen to get all this taken care of.
And it is.
And.
The direction they gave me.
Yep.
Take care of it tomorrow, or start.
Well, I mean, it'll be taken care of before the next selectmen's meeting, so these people have an answer. I guess is what I'm asking for. And the other thing is, I don't remember.
Thank you for that, Dennis.
You got a minute, 20 seconds left if you think of it, Dennis.
Yeah. And we're laughing with you, not at you.
Where?
Both of us.
Hard act to follow. I'd like to talk to you about three things. Social Security, gee, I don't remember the other two either, Dennis. But I'd like to, on a positive, I know one of you had asked me last, after last week's meeting. Wester Drive has been cleaned up, cut back, and looking a lot better as far as things go. But what has not happened are the guardrails on either side are still blowing in the wind.
I actually spoke with the road commissioner last Wednesday about that. I don't know if, I think he laughed.
Think he laughed, yeah.
But, so, it's something he is aware of. Whether it's gonna be fixed or whether he's gonna order, I don't know, but it was brought to his attention.
Great. And I do remember the second thing, and that is, do you have any idea where we stand with the state on speed limits down by the trading post?
One on nine. They are still reviewing it. We have touched base with them, and they are working on a survey, but they are months out, based on what they saw the day they came out there. They didn't feel like they needed to move us up the list too much. They are moving forward with the Shapley side as far as changing the bend in and the actual, where you're gonna cross on that side, but as far as the actual bridge, they're completing the full survey because they feel like it's.
Because the coming in and going out of the.
Store.
Of the store can still be a harrowing experience.
It is, and you can't, you know, as I've said before.
With winter coming.
Right, but there's no, and there's no nice way to say it, and there's no but. You know, when we speak to the sheriff's department and we go back on the last 10 accidents, you know, nine of them were speeding, and the other one was texting. I mean, even if we change the speed limit down there, that's not gonna change human error, and that's what's happening. That's what's causing these accidents. So, it's unfortunate, and that's what they keep telling us, but they, you know what I mean, they don't think changing that is gonna, but they're still finishing the survey.
Let's hope the squeaky wheel gets.
I had, I had a lengthy conversation with Sheriff King about that down at the fair, during the fair. Bent his ear pretty heavy on the speed limit down there, and I'll do it again. So, I mean, I give you my thoughts, and my thoughts is 35 down through there, because you know if you make it 35, they're gonna go 40.
They're gonna go 40, that's right.
And that's exactly how I put it to him, and he didn't disagree. So, you know, but, you know, he's aware from several different avenues that we want something done, so.
I still think flashing around.
I was just gonna say, flashing lights on each side before you get there.
Well, and I mean, and it's getting late in the season, but we are putting that sign out. We've had some computer software issues with it, so maybe that will help, but.
Good.
Yeah, that would be.